All right, we'll call this order the January 27, 2021, meeting of the Union Township Zoning Commission to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first on the agenda tonight is selection of officers. Does anyone wish to put their name in the hat for chair this year? I will. I'll agree to be chair if no one else is interested in taking the position.
I'll move for Mr. Lewis to be chair for the ensuing year.
I'll second.
Call roll. We have called, we, Mr. Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mrs. Pelfrey.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Okay, approval of minutes.
We need a vice chair.
Vice chair.
Oh, vice chair, got it.
I don't mind being a vice chair.
Would you like to be vice chair?
I can be vice, if no one else wants to do it.
Yeah, we were gonna nominate Bradley in abstention, but if you'd like to do it, well.
Sure.
Excuse me.
Need a motion to that effect?
All right, I'll, you're, you're, you're ready to do it? Okay, I'll nominate Carol for vice chair.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mrs. Pelfrey.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Approval of minutes, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from our December 23, 2020, meeting?
I saw something in the minutes, and I don't know if you want to change it, it's a clerical thing. It is on the back page, one, two, three, four, five lines down. There's a zero that should be a parentheses, and then it then would not be development, it probably should be developed. Content is fine.
We can make the strike through with ink on the copy and...
Let's do that, let's recommend a, the grammatical correction as specified by Carol.
Is that a motion, Mr. Lewis?
I'll move that we accept the minutes with the grammatical correction specified by Carol.
I'll second.
Roll call, Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And Mrs. Pelfrey.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, we have one case to, in front of us tonight, a zoning resolution text amendment, case 1-20-Z, submitted by Union Township Board of Trustees. Mr. Wright, could you provide a summary?
Yes, sir. I just had to make the text notations on the minutes there. Case, these are some housekeeping, housekeeping matters with the zoning resolution, we actually are, we're creating or clarifying some definitions. You'll note that you have an updated appendix there with numbering that's been corrected. Section 41 defining essential, so we'll start with the appendix. Section 41, essential services. Would note that the change there is to clarify that township facilities are essential services. Section 80, it should be 89, adding that, that they're public, that certain public facility, clarifying certain public service facilities that are not maintained by Union Township, and then similarly adding section 90, which is creating an exempt public service facility of Union Township agents assigns agencies. Moving on to Article 4, we have notice of public hearing, amended it to show a corrected section reference there, amended section 412 to show a corrected section reference, Article 5, amending section 502 to clarify that facility structures improvements or buildings owned, operated, or maintained by Union Township are considered essential services and exempt from the application of the zoning resolution. Section 532, amending the definition for parking and storage of vehicles or trailers. To add clarity regarding the parking of unlicensed vehicles in commercial districts were not otherwise authorized, expanding regulations to reflect current enforcement status of apparently inoperable vehicles in all districts, and clarifying regulations to include multipurpose small trailers in addition to boats, RVs, and established requirements. Section 533, amend the definition of junk to be more expansive and reflective of discarded items and debris due to administration and enforcement, just again fine tuning our administration and enforcement of the code. Article 6, amending the definition of section 601 to clarify that certain uses are exempt, adding principal permitted uses to section 611.4 to exempt, to create a category for exempt public service facilities, meeting the definition in Appendix A, section 615, clarifying exterior lighting to extend the operating hours of permitted uses in the district for security purposes. Section 621, again principally permitted use addition of exempt public services. 625, exterior lighting for conditional uses, section 632. I'll just go ahead and jump through these. Section 632.2, 642.3, 651.3, 661.7, and 671.1, all include the additional exempt public service facility use. There are some changes to the multifamily approval process. This has been removed, we're removing the county planning commission from the pre-application meeting to reflect prior revisions to the zoning code as authorized for home rural townships in both 645.1 and 2, including the ability for existing multifamily districts to allow for a combined concept formal plan and eliminate a second step and granting, and granting the ability to grant extensions for expiring plans. Similarly with section 655, very, very similar, it's really codification of the combined concept formal plan process, and also eliminating the county planning commission pursuant to our recent change last year pursuant to higher revised code. Defining in the amendments of the R4 to allow for minor amendments and extensions and granting some administrative ability to do that. Wait a second, I should have numbered these pages. Moving into section 660, the B1 district there, including a couple of additional uses in the personal service uses. These are uses that are readily permitted, but we want to go ahead and clarify them in that. Expanding Article 682 to expand the definition to include single or multifamily residential without, with or without commercial development. This allows for the trustees and zoning commission to make discretionary decisions in that regard. Amend to clarify the definition to space evergreen trees 10 feet apart in a staggered planting technique, which allows for a better planting strategy and more likely to survive buffer areas. Establish right away buffer yards maintained in accordance with building and fire codes, removal of residential lot size requirements, and variable buffer yards are approved on that as needed case by case basis. Article 7, amending the definition to have some numerical consistency. Most of those are just housekeeping changes in the accessory uses. We do have a clarifying when measurements for setbacks start with accessory structures. Currently, this reflects practices to the overhang and eaves of architectural projections, and also will assist in helping residents to interpret the code to know that this includes lean-tos, porches, and light. Private swimming pools as accessory uses. This excludes stormwater retention basins regulated by federal, state, or local regulations from the requirements of this section. This clearly separates stormwater retention basins from accessory uses, as with the county regulations now, they are required on almost every development. Expanding the, and clarifying the accessibility of a pool through the controlled fence and updating the definition to include a gate with a lockable mechanism with security to prevent entry from adjacent properties. Adding the clarification of height in 713.4, this reflects what's available on the market for above-ground pools, just indicating that the combined pool and wall height has to be at least six feet tall. Some housekeeping in the antenna provisions, about larger satellite dishes, they're really not applicable anymore today. Ground-mounted apparatus, that includes to the bait, that's the base of any of the structure would have, that would qualify, would have to be screened. Let's see here. Section 720.10, this expands and clarifies conditions that may be present on a property that is maintained in an unacceptable manner, which constitute direct threats to public health and safety, accumulation of junk trash, household waste, construction debris, environment and other environment conducive to infestation. This section provides additional safety and better welfare for the residents of Union Township. This also clarifies that additional adverse conditions that may be present that constitute a violation under that section, specifically waste, runoff, those kind of things. Article 8, just some parking changes. We're expanding the use, or clarifying the design of lighting, downward shielded, directed, also defining additional lighting requirements, parking of disabled vehicles, also clarifying the definition that an inoperable vehicle includes those that cannot be legally driven on a roadway or are otherwise unable due to physical or mechanical defect. And the commercial district allows us greater enforcement capability. We expanded the barber and beauty shop uses to further and better define the parking standards for those uses. Regarding sign regulations, talking about signage in commercial districts, increasing some bulletin board signage provisions for quasi-public uses, increasing the, or modifying the definition to include banners, and clarifying that they're only to be up for 30 days per quarter. Amending section 907 to include one inflatable sign. Article 7 deals with our site plan review, one of them's a spelling correction, clarifies pre-application process, clearer instructions to the applicant, clarifying again the review procedure, clarifying instructions regarding processing for zoning certificates, and then a correction of a spelling error in Article 13. That, those are the changes in a nutshell. Try to be as brief as I can with them, the texts really speak for themselves, but that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Since there's no one here to ask questions, we'll move into private session and see if anyone has any comments or suggestions for any modifications.
I do.
All right, please proceed.
Okay. A lot of these are picky, but if we want a professional document, we need to be picky. The first one, and this is pretty consistent through most of it, but not through all of it, a heading does not get a period after it. If you look at Article 4, 400, it's got a period. All of them in section, in Article 4 have periods, all those periods should go away.
Ms. Pelfrey, I would indicate that's every section throughout the entire zoning resolution.
No, actually it's not.
Is it not?
Uh...
Almost every one that I'm looking at, we may have missed a period.
Look at, let's see, there's some in 13 that don't have periods.
Okay.
There's some...
Oh.
Let's see.
And I would point that Article 13 is a newer section of the zoning code, I think we adopted that in 2005.
Okay, and it, within 13, some of the headings have periods and some of the headings don't.
Okay.
So we need to be consistent with that.
So would you suggest that we just add periods? Would we, do you want us to go through? I think for consistency's sake, we should either choose one or the other.
Yes.
I think the bulk of the headings in the articles presented tonight, I don't want to get outside the scope of what we're looking at, but the bulk of the headings do have periods.
Yes.
So Article 13, add periods to the headings, would that be a good, would that address your concern there? The numbered headings, is that what you're suggesting?
Well, that, that'd be your choice, but grammatically speaking, that's incorrect. Okay?
Carol's recommending not all the periods be removed in the headings.
In section 401, in the second line toward the end, it's zoning district map. Some places that's capitalized and some places it's not. So we need to be consistent on whether or not we want to capitalize the zoning map. Let's see, it's all on that page, page 2. Okay, item 2, section A is the same thing, there's two zoning maps there that are not in caps.
So 401, let me go back here, 401.
Sorry.
Line 2, capitalize zoning district map, okay?
Okay, and in section 403.
So it's in 403?
Number 2. There's two of them in A, zoning maps in A twice. And then also in the first line of the paragraph following A.
All right.
Okay, on page 3, and here again, this is a consistency thing, if you look in section 406, a little further down than halfway, it starts 120 with a 120 in parentheses.
Uh huh.
All through the entire document, some places we have the words written out with the number in parentheses, some places we just have the words written out with no number, and in some places we just have a number with no words written out. So those are very inconsistent.
So what would your recommendation be? Do you want both?
I would prefer both.
Okay.
Just makes it a lot more clear.
Okay, so that would be the word and then parenthetical.
Okay, and I didn't mark all of those because there's a lot of them. And also percentages, sometimes 50% is in numbers, sometimes it's written out in words.
So we can do the word plus the number?
Okay, let's see. Page 3.
Okay.
Next thing is on page 10. Oh, okay, and 441, second to last full line, it talks about at the next regular meeting. Should that be caps? I don't think that should be caps. That's not the name of a meeting.
440, at the next...
441. One, two, three.
We do, we do, when we, when we, when we apply to that, generally in our practice, we do capitalize the term "regular meeting."
Okay.
So...
All right. And then, okay, on page 11, 442.
Okay.
Item 2B, comprehensive plan is capitalized in other places, but not here. And that is all for Article 4.
Okay.
I don't think, oh, just as an example, item 513, the third line, we've got 50 feet, measured 25 feet, and it's all written out, there's no numerical. So that's just an example of the inconsistency.
We can address that.
Okay, that's all I have.
Would that be okay to make a blanket recommendation to, to add throughout the text that's being amended this evening, the articles being amended to address the word and number throughout?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, that's the same thing.
Let me get the, that was all for Article 5 that you had?
That was it for Article 5.
Okay.
Article 6, okay.
Okay, let's see.
If you have the sections called out, we can, that will make our job.
Okay, I didn't mark them all, but I can go back and do that later.
We can, we'll just go through, I mean, that's, that's okay, we can do it.
There's a lot of them.
Okay.
Okay, on page 21, which is section 6, just a second.
645?
645. And the third paragraph of item 3, third line, concept plan, again needs to be capitalized. And then at the bottom of the page, we talked about this, and you said it would be fixed, but there's a heading there that's all by itself, it needs to be bumped to the next page.
Yes, we, we do adjust the headers so that we don't end up with headers without text, as just a general matter of formatting.
Item 648 on page 25. Item 1, second line.
Okay.
Formal development plan needs to be caps.
Wait a second, 648, okay.
Item 1, second line.
All right.
And then also in 649, the first line, formal development plan.
And 649, same thing.
We talked about this one too, at the very bottom, there's a 4 hanging out there all by itself.
Yes, that's a, that's in the red line, that they show...
Oh, that's right.
Yes.
That's what that was.
Yep, that's a deletion and a renumber, yes.
Okay. Item 655, number 3, last paragraph, third line from the bottom, formal development plan, caps.
655.3, yep, I see it.
Oh, and here's one I missed. 655, item 2, third line, concept plan, caps. And, page 49, let's see if that...
Wait, wait, that last one was 655.2.
Yes.
Okay, concept, concept plan, okay. I see, actually, and I see it in another one there, we'll go through.
Okay.
And, and look at that in that same section times 2, okay?
49, oh, that one we crossed off, so that's good. That's all I have in 6.
Okay.
Article 7. Okay, those are just more of the numeric...
So I see 711 is one of the primary, that's word, number, plus number.
Item 3, item 5, item 1. There's a lot of those.
We'll fix those.
Okay.
Okay.
Page 7.
Page 7, Article 7, page 7, okay.
Oh, we talked about this one as well, I asked you how you could possibly screen something that's 15 feet high.
That it applies to the, the site of the apparatus, so...
Right.
So that the apparatus would be the, the structure of the, the accessory use, the, the antenna. So that, that would be, that is just a point of clarification. We could, and that's in, I mean, if, I mean, if you want to recommend a change there...
Well, I think we talked about just saying around the base of it.
So it would be 7.71E?
Just a second, I've lost it.
717.1E, where it talks about the, where it said, where it says the site, should it say the site of the base, of the ground man, or say the ground-mounted apparatus base?
Yes.
Uh, let's see, ground-mounted apparatus base, okay, I will, we can incorporate that change.
Okay, number 8. Page 5.
Let me, let me go back real quick so I can draw on this, these...
Yeah, wouldn't that be better just to read that the, the site of the ground-mounted apparatus shall be screened with shrubbery and/or landscaped as proposed by the zoning permission, but specify a height, a traditional height of six feet of, of coverage or something to that effect, a minimum of six feet of shrubbery or...
That would be better, that would be more specific.
Rather than try to specify the base, who knows how big the base would be, this would make it specific.
Let's, so we could say instead of, instead of that, why don't we look at, Mr. Lewis, what was the site, so it would read the...
Yeah, it would read the site of the ground-mounted apparatus shall be screened with shrubbery and/or landscaped to a minimum of six feet as proposed in the zoning permit application, six feet high, to a, a six, a standard minimum six feet screening. Somebody wanted to do more, they could do more.
As proposed in the zoning permit application. Okay?
All right, Carol, continue. Next one?
Okay.
Okay.
Article 8.
So we're done with Article 7?
Yes.
All right.
Page 5, 805.
805.
Second line... Second line. At the end, there's two within anys in there. We want the second one at the end, within in any. We need to take one of those ins out.
I have the parking of a disabled... I think I may have... Within, oh, just, I would delete the in.
Yes.
Strike the word in. And let me write this down, Article 8. 805, delete... 805, delete the word in. Okay?
Okay, 812, item 7. We talked about this one as well, and I don't know why all you men didn't catch this. Male salon workers are called technicians. They're not stylists. So we need to add technician into the... For each barber, stylist, or technician as applicable. Didn't you guys know that?
Nope, I thought it was stylists. I thought technicians were technical.
They're nail technicians.
No, they're artists.
That's all I have in 8.
You did see that we struck the term "beauty operator."
Yes. And number 9. I don't think I have anything.
Okay.
I don't know, gentlemen, if you notice that some of the sections are in a different size type. Corey said that's because it's still in draft form.
Yes, so it just depended on how the word settings were set. Where, when you track reviews or red lines, you can either print simple revisions or print the full revisions. Some of them show like paragraph indents and, you know, really things that aren't really germane to the actual content. And then the simplified version just shows the strike through or out of text. So that's why the words will change the text size for you when it compresses the margins down on that. But when it's printed in clean form, you know, upon adoption and sent to the printer, it's all standardized 12-size font, Times New Roman, I believe, yeah. Were there any changes in Article 9?
No, just...
Okay.
Just a... Just a comment about the type size.
Would you like us to check for the number-word agreement in there?
Yes.
Okay.
All the sections need to be checked for that.
For word, number, okay. We will do that.
Okay, in Article 11.
Okay.
Page 5. We talked about this, and you explained what it was, and I cannot remember. 1121, item 2. Second line from the bottom, as applicable, and then there's a dash in there. What did you tell me the dash was? It's in red.
Oh, that's a deleted... That's a deleted extra space.
Okay, okay. Then that's all I have in 11.
Okay. As I indicated, you know, as I've indicated, the table of contents and the stuff at the front of the document will be cleaned up before we send it to the printer. So all that gets triple-checked on your pages, page references, the whole nine yards. Article 13?
Article 13, page 4, item 9B. If you could write, justify all the words that are in parentheses, I think it would make the page look a lot cleaner, make it easier to read.
So clean up the margins.
It looks kind of messy that way. Page 5.
We can clean that up and align them.
Page 5, page 6. Okay, on page 6.
Okay.
Item 1306. And this will probably change when you fix the type. At the end of the line, it's got FA dash, and then the NQ is on the next line. Those should be on the same line.
Oh, yeah, the margin, yep.
That shouldn't be split like that.
As... We'll move the FA. Let's see, Article 13.06. FA dash, NQ together, okay?
Okay, that's all I have in 13.
Okay.
And then the appendix. We were going to put A on the appendix.
Oh.
You keep referring to appendix A, and there is no appendix A. There's just an appendix.
So we will call it appendix A, okay?
And then we have on the... On page XIV, 14, item 19. Board means of board of zoning appeals. That first of needs to come out.
XIV.
Uh-huh. Item 19, oh.
You just call them out by number.
Okay, but the numbers...
That's all right. You can call them out by new number, as revised in the document you have. So definition 19 means, means, so we need to strike out the word of.
Yes. And also, all the way through, why have you put a comma after the first word? That really should not be there.
That is, I think, for consistency purposes, so that people can see the term, the term being capitalized, comma. Again, I didn't... No pride of authorship on that at all. It's what we've inherited. I think to keep it consistent, I think we should keep it that way, just my personal, professional opinion on that. But I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
We've just inherited that.
I would take it out, but that's up to you.
Well, would you replace it with a semicolon or a colon?
No, no, nothing.
We have to separate the definition term from the definition.
No, because it's written as a sentence.
You look in a dictionary, and if they look up the dictionary, the word, you know, forward, the forward is separated then from the description, the definition of the description forward by either a comma or a semicolon.
It's typically on a second line. It has the word and then the definition under it.
I mean, to honestly, it'll save a space.
It's not a biggie. It's not a biggie.
Right.
It's just, it doesn't look right to me because it's... The comma is stuck in the middle of a sentence, so...
All right.
Up to you.
I mean, we're gonna... Presumably, the board's gonna take action with the recommendation, so I need to know whether or not we're gonna, I guess, we would include...
Yeah, Karen, what would you like him to do? Remove it or move the definitions to a second line?
I don't see that it needs to be moved to a second line.
Okay.
It's in caps. It stands out. Just leave them in there.
Okay.
And then on item 35, density.
Okay.
Second line.
Uh-huh.
This one was iffy. I mentioned this to you, but we were kind of rushed. We need to either put... Take the S off of streets or put an S on public or private right-of-way. So that they're consistent. And I don't know if it would be rights of way or right of ways.
I was just thinking that. I would think it would be rights of way.
Rights of way.
I would think it would.
I think it's probably easier to just say on any street, public or private right-of-way, so to strike the S.
Okay.
And all these changes will go back to our law director for final review, just so you're...
Item 40, essential services.
Should be 41 in the modified... In the corrected version.
Okay, 41. Down toward the bottom with the line that starts equipment and accessories.
Yes.
Reasonably necessary for the furnishing of adequate service. I think that should have an S on it as well.
Okay.
Okay, item 57, institution. I guess that would be 58 now.
It'd be 58, yes.
Okay, I... This may be all right. I'm just not sure what you're trying to say here. Occupied by a nonprofit or a nonprofit establishment. Are those two different things?
Um, I guess it could be a nonprofit organization, but it could also be a nonprofit facility. I think it's a bit semantics, and again, I'm not an attorney, but... We could clarify by a nonprofit organization or add the word organization.
Okay.
I agree, it's confusing, but I do think there's virtue in leaving both of those in there because there's a slight causal distinction. But I would agree with adding the word organization in.
Oh, and in operable vehicle, item B. Unsafe for travel due to the lack of a part or parts. That should have a comma there. Such as, but not limited to, and another comma, which it does have.
So we'll add comma after parts, okay?
Junkyard.
Okay, what is that, item 61? Okay.
In the third line. Let's see, includes auto-wrecking yards, house-wrecking yards, used lumber yards, and place or yards. Should that be places or yards for storage? Everything else is plural.
I think, yeah, I would say and any, I would say and any place or yards.
So you're gonna leave place singular, but yards plural?
It could be, yes, because I think throughout the zoning code, I think we refer to like place, place being a one singular location, or there could be multiple locations.
Okay.
You could say, I don't know, I mean, if it's the board's pleasure, I mean, we could leave it as it stands, or do you think we should...
Adding any in front of it then implies place is plural. So any place is the plural of place, isn't it?
No, it would be any places.
Any places isn't correct, is it?
It doesn't sound right, but any place is not plural.
Well, it could be one or more.
Yeah.
But it may only be one. It may be one, it may be several.
Correct, well, it could...
Any place, okay.
Whichever you guys want.
Add the word any, okay?
And then in the last line. Where such used are conducted. I believe that should be where such uses are conducted.
Yes, it should be uses.
Item 64, laboratory, medical, or dental. Second to last line, toward the end, and where no fabrication if. That should be is.
Should be is or... Oh, no. Oh, yes, is, okay, I'm sorry, is, okay.
Okay, item 88.
Okay.
I'm gonna get booed here. Second to last line. He may be, let's put he slash she. There are female architects and engineers.
Okay.
Item 109, story. Under A.
Hold on one second, 109?
Mm-hmm.
It's gonna be, actually, it'll be 110 now.
Oh, we jumped up two numbers?
Yes, because there was a duplicate number in there.
Okay.
When we made some correct... They gave you the corrected version tonight. So that's 110?
110. The last full line of text.
Okay.
It says, "Other than for a janitor or caretaker of his family." I believe that should be of a caretaker or his family.
Let me read this.
In item B, there's a janitor or caretaker or his family.
Yes, okay. Or, so in A.
Item 120.
Okay.
One, two, three, fourth line down. Office of the county engineer. Office should be a cap. It's a specific office. Okay, and then the only other thing I have, and this is more of a question. On the definition of junk, where did that go?
60, I believe, or 59?
Junk.
60.
Yep, 60.
And then I also need to pull out Article 5. 533. In Article 5, 533, you added garbage and household waste. And in the definition, that's not in there, but it also says anything that can be used again. So I was just not real clear on the addition in 533. If that should also be, I mean...
I would agree with you that we should add it to the definition in 60 for consistency and force.
Okay. Household waste can be reused. It can be composted.
So what I would suggest is we modify the definition of junk to say machinery, scrap, iron, steel, or other ferrous and non-ferrous metals, tools, implements, or portions thereof, glass, plaster, cordage, building materials. And I think that we should add garbage after that. Or household waste. Comma, discarded construction materials, because that's also in the amended definition of 533. Construction materials or debris. Because both of those are amendments to 533, and then it would read comma or other waste. And that would be consistent for the code.
That's all I've got.
Anybody else have any other recommendations for modification?
No.
I've been working, I can, been working on a motion. Let's, I'd like to float this motion, and then if we get a second, we can discuss whether it's comprehensive enough. Regarding case one dash twenty-T, zoning resolution text amendments. The zoning commission finds that the proposed text amendment to the Union Township zoning commission, zoning resolution is consistent with the intent of the zoning resolution and the comprehensive land use plan twenty thirty. This modification being considered applies to Articles four through nine, eleven, and thirteen, and the appendix of our zoning resolution, including the table of contents. The majority of the amendments deal with the township property exemptions and administrative clarifications through the text. This commission therefore recommends that text amendments be adopted with the following recommendation. Grammatical consistency and clarification modifications noted by Commissioner Pelfrey be incorporated into the amendments. Reference notes provided by Commissioner Pelfrey. And that completes my motion. If you get a second, we can discuss it.
Second it.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
Oh, I'm sorry, did, Daniel, did you second it?
I did.
All right. Okay, we have a second, so we have a chance then to discuss it. Does, Carol, do you think that is comprehensive enough, or do we add, need to rerun the, uh... Motion and include additional recommendations to cover more than what I stated? Because you could, you can provide all of your documentation to Corey, right?
If it pleases the board, I could just, I could just note the specific changes for the record.
All right.
So from Commissioner Pelfrey's notes, I have throughout the document, um, look at the, the period on the headers and be consistent. In that regard, I have, uh, moving into, uh, obviously, she wants us to check, um, in the, in the table of contents, we'll make the appendix A suggestion on that. Um, and then moving into Article four, four oh one, line two, capitalized zoning district map. Four oh three, three two, capitalized zoning district map. Four oh six, add the, and clarify throughout the document and all articles being amended and considered by the board right now, wherever words or numbers are referenced, to add both. So it will be words, the number, the numerical word spelled out plus the number in parentheses, and then the distinguishing, uh, character, whether it's feet, inches, par, you know, percentage, whatever, we would, we would do that.
Oh, can I add something to that? Also, another thing that was not consistent was feet. Sometimes it was spelled out, sometimes it was just a little more...
We will, we'll make sure that we address, through that comment, address the, the word delineation and then the character, um, notation on that as well. So we'll make sure we address both of those when we do the word and then the parentheses, so.
Okay.
Uh, add, uh, you have add the percentage word, that was there. Uh, add percentage, whether it's word, written, and then, so we'll do that for consistency. Four forty-four point two B, capitalize the term comprehensive plan. Article five, section five, thirteen, I have, uh, I wrote a note here, um, again, where it's numeric word, number, word number clarification with the paragraph. So, uh, Article six, six forty-five point three, capitalize concept plan. Address any formatting issues. Article six, section six forty-eight, capitalize the word formal development plan. Six forty-nine, capitalize the word formal development plan. Six fifty-five point three, formal development plan capitalized. Six fifty-five point two, concept plan capitalized. And I also have a notation to double-check the document to make sure that those are capitalized throughout those articles. Article seven, section seven eleven, word plus number agreement throughout that section. Seven seventeen point one E. We're, we have a note there to make a change to the way that, that the screening for accessory antennas reads. To say, and I wrote it here. The site of the ground-mounted apparatus shall be screened with shrubbery or landscape to a minimum height of six feet as propos, as proposed in the zoning permit application. Is how that will read. Uh, Article eight, section eight oh five, delete the word in. Article eight, section eight twelve seven, add the word technician. Article nine, check for word number, uh, issues only. Article eleven, write justify the paragraph, um... I'll have to note which paragraph that was. Article eleven. Ms. Pelfrey, do you remember?
Just one second, and I can tell you. It was... I don't see it in eleven.
I might have actually, that could be, uh, no, you know what? That's in, there was nothing in Article eleven, that's Article thirteen, that's right. That's Article thirteen, section, uh... What is that? Uh, thirteen oh... Thirteen hundred point nine.
B, nine B.
B, and that's justification, yep. Align and clean up justification, Article thirteen, section thirteen point, oh, thirteen oh six. I have a notation to, uh, fix the, where it references, the F A dash N Q to be on one line together. And that's the only changes I have to the proposed text from Article thirteen. And then let me read through the appendix changes real quick. In the table of contents and the appendix A title, add the term A, since it's referred to as appendix A throughout the document. Definition number nineteen, delete the extra word of. Definition thirty-five, strike the word, the number, or strike the letter S from the word streets. Number forty-one. Add, or change in the third to last line, uh, add the, make services plural. Service, make it services to denote plural. Article, or, definition fifty-eight, add the word organization to clarify both nonprofit organizations and nonprofit establishments. Definition number sixty, expand the definition of junk, uh, consistent with changes proposed to Article thirty, five thirty-three, to include the terms garbage or household waste, discarded construction materials or debris, or other waste. Our, number fifty-seven, point B, add a comma after the word parts. Number sixty-one, add the word any to clarify, in, in front of the word place, to clarify that it's any place. Articles, or number sixty-four. Change the word if to is. Number eighty-eight. Add, change he to he, she. Number one ten. Change the word of to or. Number one twenty, capitalize the word office in reference to the office of the Claremont County engineer. And that, those are the changes. Did I miss anything?
I think you have them.
Okay. And that becomes a formal component of the motion?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll make sure we put it in minutes.
All right.
If Craig can read my handwriting.
All right, we had a second. Mr. Wright, would you call roll?
Craig, you want to call?
Roll call, Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mrs. Pelfrey.
Yes.
And Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right.
Okay.
All right, that was the only case we had tonight. Does anybody have any new business?
Prior to us closing, Mr. Chairman, I would like to, on the record, commend and thank Commissioner Pelfrey for all the hard work that she put in, uh, going through various areas of, of, of the zoning resolutions and, and for helping to improve the professional and accurate nature of our resolutions. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lewis, I would, I would add that the case that was heard before the board last, the, the last meeting, they were able to amend the plan to enhance the buffer yard as suggested and recommended by the zoning commission, and the trustees adopted that change.
Oh, great.
So that, that was included, and it was successfully executed, so.
Were they able to get a variance down on those corner lots?
They were able to reduce a setback on those and increase the buffer with the existing subdivision where the Sub Street was, so that, that was a positive outcome there.
I think so too. That's great. All right, if no one has anything else, we'll adjourn this meeting at eight o'clock. Meeting adjourned.
Okay, I had something else, but it, it was off the record.
Oh, off the record?
This is just...